Back into open session.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are back in session. Okay, I'd like to welcome you folks to the Monday, October 28th County Council Meeting. We will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Associate Press Sir Brad Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Nancy Schneider. Please stand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Let's pray, may we?
Okay.
Dear Lord in heaven, we thank you again for your goodness to us.
Oh, so I'd make a motion that we go into closed meeting per state statute RSMO 620.0211.
We praise you and give you the honor and glory for all things. We ask your blessing upon our city and county in this area and that we would just follow
Do I have a second?
Second.
your wisdom and your will, especially entering this upcoming week with the election day coming.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I knew we'd roll call. Yeah, we need to roll.
Councilman Swanson?
Lord, I just pray that we trust you in all things and we ask you to bless this particular
Yes.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Ehlum?
meeting and help us again to just treat each other kindly and show the characteristics
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Dave?
Yeah.
of Jesus in our life.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
In your name we pray.
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Amen.
Yes.
Okay, we will go into the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Close session.
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 all.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Don't believe there's a...
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Go ahead, call their office.
Close session.
Close session.
Councilman Swanson?
Close session.
Here, ma'am.
Close session.
Councilman Brazel?
Close session.
Close session.
Councilman Ehlum?
Close session.
Here.
Close session.
Councilman Hollander?
Close session.
Here.
Close session.
Councilman Hammond?
Close session.
Here.
Close session.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Close session.
Here.
Close session.
Councilman Baker?
Close session.
Here.
Close session.
Close session.
Okay.
Close session.
First thing on the agenda tonight is the conditional use permit.
Close session.
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 Bill's...
Close session.
Bill for final perfection, final passage, Bill number 5342.
Close session.
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 Bill number 5342, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for general
Close session.
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 contracting services relating to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner,
Close session.
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 and William Nolte, applicant.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend Bill 5342 and replace it with substitute
Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Close session. Close session.
Close session.
Close session.
Bill 5342.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now...
Just any discussion of that?
Well, yeah. Is there any discussion? Basically, there's just been the addition...
I think it was from Holliday because it was in plant and zone, but there was no outside school. So, I mean, it's my...
Yeah, I think that Mr. Brazel wanted that added on there because, you know, and I think we all kind of agreed that that was a good thing. Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of the substitute bill say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will vote on the actual substitute bill number 5342.
Substitute Bill number 5342, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for a general contracting services building related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte, applicant. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
Okay. First thing on the agenda tonight is the conditional use permit. Bill's... Bill for final perfection, final passage, Bill number 5342.
Bill number 5342, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for general contracting services building related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte, applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend Bill 5342 and replace it with substitute Bill 5342.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now...
Just any discussion of that?
Well, yeah. Is there any discussion? Basically, there's just been the addition...
I think it was from Holliday because it was in plant and zone, but there was no outside school. So, I mean, it's my...
Yeah, I think that Mr. Brazel wanted that added on there because, you know, and I think we all kind of agreed that that was a good thing. Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of the substitute bill say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will vote on the actual substitute bill number 5342.
Substitute Bill number 5342, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for a general contracting services building related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte, applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend Bill 5342 and replace it with substitute Bill 5342.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now...
Just any discussion of that?
Well, yeah. Is there any discussion? Basically, there's just been the addition...
I think it was from Holliday because it was in plant and zone, but there was no outside school. So, I mean, it's my...
Yeah, I think that Mr. Brazel wanted that added on there because, you know, and I think we all kind of agreed that that was a good thing. Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion? All those in favor of the substitute bill say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will vote on the actual substitute bill number 5342.
Substitute Bill number 5342, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 24-05, for a general contracting services building related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte, applicant. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Bill number two passes. Next up is public presentations, the 505 Foundation. Please come forward here.
Not everybody at once now.
Mr. Chairman, the 505 Foundation, just to remind you, 505 was Sergeant John Bush's DSO.
Correct.
And so, we're very lucky here to have most of his family here tonight and a very short video that they helped us produce about him because of their generosity these last years.
That'd be great. Chief?
Yeah, members of council, the 505 Foundation, again, held another golf tournament that supports the foundation. In turn, they purchased training equipment for the department. And Sergeant Bush, their father, was known for his passion for training, officer development, creating officer safety, and he was extremely passionate about it. And the 505 Foundation supports that. And so, the equipment they've purchased has greatly enhanced our training, continues to do that. And so, we couldn't be more, any more appreciative of what the foundation's doing for us and the Bush family, especially the Bush family, in setting this up and getting it going. So, it's been fantastic.
Chief, do you maybe want to do the video and then the presentation if that's okay with the family?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Everybody knew dad as Sergeant Bush, Captain Bush, at one time major. He was candidate for sheriff in 1976. So, everybody knew him in this community. But, he was also a father, a grandfather. And that's the side people didn't see unless you were friends of our family or friends of his.
We love the brotherhood that was around him that now we get to feel this day every year. But, it's emotional. But, we love that we're carrying on his mission, and I think he would be proud.
There's no question he made a difference. He was a taskmaster. And when I say that, when he went to the range for training, it was no picnic. He was hard on us. He put us, stressed us out during those situations so when they occurred in real life, we could perform highly.
Things that are going smoothly one second can turn terribly wrong the next second. And by training that instant response to what could go wrong, I think he helps bring a lot of people home.
Started one night, a friend of his, Al Moss, was shot and killed on 461. And then in 1970, a young deputy named Dick Hankey was killed. And he took it personally. They were his friends. And he said, "No more." His passion became officer safety, training, firearms, and he took that to the next level.
He would teach us to move off the X. Moving off the X means if you're in a situation, you just don't stay in one place. And at 100 miles an hour, this car is coming at me. So, I shot at that car and hit its tire, which caused it to spin out of control. And if I wouldn't have got off the X, I would have got ranaled. So, part of his training, teaching me to not just stay in one place during a deadly force encounter, no doubt, I think, saved my life.
Anybody that knew my dad, it was the rules were the rules. And when you come to training, we're going to take it seriously. So, when you encounter the evil, that you can deal with it and you can overcome it, whether it's your combat mindset, your firearm proficiency, your tactical training, it was going to be his focus for training.
Started with firearms training, but then it evolved into first aid training and tactics. We would bring police cars onto the range and actually practice traffic stops and things that go wrong in a traffic stop, shooting from a vehicle, shooting at vehicles. And then that evolved into SWAT and SWAT training, and now the training facility they have is world-class.
I think that dad was just all about do the right thing. Like, just do what's right and that you will live a good life. Like, I feel like he was just all about, you know, honor and trust and just doing the right thing.
Very powerful. Very, very powerful.
So, this is our fourth year coming here. And thank you again for allowing us to attend your meeting. This year, we'll make a total of $30,000 now donated over the last four years.
Wow.
If you remember, the first two years was six and six. Last year was eight, and this year was 10. So, this was our best year ever, thanks to a lot of support that not only the county has given us. Joanne's been very supportive of our family and our tournament, and we can't thank everybody enough for everything you've done for us. So, my brothers, the movie stars. John is in from DC. Lives in Virginia. And Kevin is in from Nashville. And our sister Shawna, who usually comes to us each year, she has recently moved to Texas. So, but she's here with us and on the internet. So, but anyway, this year, we'd like to present the check to Chief Fritz for $10,000.
And Councilman, I would let you know that at one point in time, John and Kevin and their dad were all sergeants of the department. That picture that you saw earlier was them. And they carried on his law enforcement legacy. Kevin eventually left us for the private sector, and John is in presidential protection with the Secret Service.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Your job was consummate professional. Nobody liked him, so I'm so glad to see you. Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate all you do.
Having worked for the county for quite a few years, I knew John, and he was a hell
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't believe there's a...
Councilman Swanson?
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
Okay. First thing on the agenda tonight is the conditional use permit bills, Bill for Final Perfection, Final Passage, Bill number fifty-three forty-two.
Bill number five-three-four-two, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP twenty-four dash zero-five, for general contracting services relating to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to amend Bill fifty-three forty-two and replace it with substitute Bill fifty-three forty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now...
Just any discussion of that?
Well, yeah. Is there any discussion? Basically, there's just been the addition...
I think it was a formality because it was in plant-owned zone, there was no outside store. So, I mean, it's mine.
Yeah, I think that Mr. Brazel wanted that added on there because, you know, and I think we all kind of agreed that that was a good thing. Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the substitute bill say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will vote on the actual substitute bill number fifty-three forty-two.
Substitute bill number five-three-four-two, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP twenty-four dash zero-five, for a general contracting services building related to building construction to Stephen Nolte, property owner, and William Nolte applicant. Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Bill number two passes. Next up is public presentations, the Five-oh-Five Foundation. Please come forward here.
Not everybody at once now.
Mr. Chairman, the Five-oh-Five Foundation, just to remind you, Five-oh-Five was Sergeant John Bush's DSO.
Correct.
And so, we are very lucky here to have most of his family here tonight and a very short video that they helped us produce about him because of their generosity these last years.
That'd be great. Chief?
Yeah, members of the council, the Five-oh-Five Foundation, again, held another golf tournament that supports the foundation. In turn, they purchased training equipment for the department. And Sergeant Bush, their father, was known for his passion for training, officer development, creating officer safety, and he was extremely passionate about it, and the Five-oh-Five Foundation supports that. And so, the equipment they've purchased has greatly enhanced our training, continues to do that, and so, we couldn't be more appreciative of what the foundation's doing for us and the Bush family, especially the Bush family, in setting this up and getting it going. So, it's been fantastic.
Chief, do you maybe want to do the video and then the presentation if that's okay with the family?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Everybody knew Dad is Sergeant Bush, Captain Bush, at one time major. He was candidate for sheriff in nineteen-seventy-six. So, everybody knew him in this community, but he was also a father, a grandfather, and that's aside people didn't see unless you were friends of our family or friends of his.
We love the brotherhood that was around him that now we get to feel this day every year. But it's emotional, but we love that we're carrying on his mission, and I think he would be proud.
There's no question he made a difference. He was a taskmaster, and when I say that, when he went to the range for training, it was no picnic. He was hard on us. He put us, stressed us out during those situations so when they occurred in real life, we could perform and handle them.
Things that are going smoothly one second can turn terribly wrong the next second, and by training that instant response to what could go wrong, I think he helps bring a lot of people home.
Started one night, a friend of his, Al Moss, who was shot, killed on forty-sixty-one, and then in nineteen-seventy, a young deputy named Dick Hankey was killed. And he took it personally. They were his friends, and he said, "No more." His passion became officer safety, training, firearms, and he took that to the next level. He would teach us to move off the X. Moving off the X means if you're in a situation, you just don't stay in one place. And at a hundred miles an hour, this car is going to happen. So, I shot at that car and hit its tire, which caused it to spin out of control, and if I wouldn't have got off the X, I would have got ran over. So, part of his training, teaching me to not just stay in one place during a deadly force encounter, no doubt, I think, saved my life. Anybody that knew my dad, it was the rules are the rules, and when you come to training, we're going to take it seriously. So, when you encounter the evil, that you can deal with it and you can overcome it, whether it's your combat mindset, your firearm proficiency, your tactical training, it was going to be his focus for training.
It started with firearms training, but then it evolved into first aid training and tactics. We would bring police cars onto the range and actually practice traffic stops and things that go wrong in a traffic stop, shooting from a vehicle, shooting at vehicles. And then, that evolved into SWAT and SWAT training, and now the training facility they have is world-class.
I think that Dad was just all about doing the right thing. Like, just do what's right and that you will live a good life. Like, I feel like he was just all about, you know, honor and trust and just doing the right thing.
Very powerful. Very, very powerful.
So, this is our fourth year coming here, and thank you again for allowing us to attend your meeting. This year, we'll make a total of thirty thousand dollars now donated over the last four years.
Wow.
If you remember, the first two years was six and six, last year was eight, and this year was ten. So, this was our best year ever, thanks to a lot of support that not only the county has given us, Joanne's been very supportive of our family and our tournament, and we can't thank everybody enough for everything you've done for us. So, my brothers, the movie stars. John is in from DC, lives in Virginia, and Kevin is in from Nashville, and our sister, Shawna, who usually comes to us each year, she has recently moved to Texas, so, but she's here with us and on the internet. So, but anyway, this year, we'd like to present the check to Chief Fritz for ten thousand dollars.
And Councilman, I would let you know that at one point in time, John and Kevin and their dad were all sergeants of the department. That picture that you saw earlier was them, and they carried on his law enforcement legacy. Kevin eventually left us for the private sector, and John is in presidential protection with the Secret Service.
Yes, we appreciate all you do. Heaven.
Next year is June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. Ooh, that's nice.
Nice place.
Having worked for the county for quite a few years, I knew John, and he was a hell of a man.
All right. Moving on now, we will have a public hearing on the Calhoun Ferry County license renewal for Grafton and Golden Eagle ferries.
First speaker, Arnie Deanoff.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, and I'm a county public advocate. We go through this every year because our county charter requires a public hearing on all ferry route licenses. In this case, it's a public entity, and I would ask that you, as a governmental entity, enter into an intergovernmental agreement and waive all fees and costs of the ferry license agreement or the ferry license for the city of Grafton, Illinois, which is a not-for-profit municipal corporation located in Jersey County, Illinois. Three-fourths of the usage of the ferry route is comprised of St. Charles County residents or vehicles, and the rest or remaining is St. or St. Char-, or I'm sorry, St. Louis County residents. This is a public domain. It's a public service to ferry people throughout county, or from St. Charles County to Jersey County, Illinois, and I would again ask that you waive any license fee requirements. This is collected by the Office of County Register, Brendan Hinton, and believe it or not, I believe that that fee would be passed on to our residents who utilize the ferry service. For those reasons, I am testifying in favor of granting the full license to the city of Grafton, Illinois, located in Jersey County, and that the county council also waive any fees or required licenses because it is a public service and it's a not-for-profit issue all the way around. It's a service to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up is public comments. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
We do. Arnie Deanoff?
Mr. Deanoff.
Regarding election authority testing, community, or excuse me, county counselor, and some consent agenda items.
Okay.
Good evening, once again, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff. I'm a county public advocate. I'm also, as of today, certified by the Missouri Secretary of State as a writing candidate for the sixty-fourth state legislative district located around Highway P to the Mississippi River, to the Lincoln County line to the north, to Warren County to the west, and Highway P in Tom Genever in the city of O'Fallon in the south, which takes in a small portion of Wentzville, Josephsville, Flint Hill, Forestale, and very north O'Fallon, including the city of St. Paul. The election authority held last Thursday a ballot machine testing and logistics test to comply with Chapter one fifteen of the revised state statutes of Missouri. I attended that, and I'm very satisfied, and kudos to all the election authority officials and employees. They did an excellent job. There is not a doubt that we are going to have a safe, secure, transparent, and open, honest election cycle this coming Tuesday, and with the, every day, it's about five thousand to seventy-five hundred registered voters who are voting at either the election authority or Element Church in Wentzville. There was a reserved seat that was there for Councilman Joe Brazel, but he fails to attend these logistics and ballot testing tests, and I would encourage him, if he's going to keep criticizing the election authority, that he come to the testing and see exactly what is transpired and goes on there. Over thirty-two thousand county residents, as of this evening, have voted early, and it could be possibly by the end of Monday at five o'clock, one hundred thousand to one hundred and thirty thousand voters by Monday, November fourth. I ask that you, as council members, they're lacking some assistance in terms of directing traffic and logistics at the county election authority and Element Church. You guys make twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars, plus full medical benefits, plus a pension. I would ask you to join me in volunteering with the county election authority and giving back to our community to make sure that we have a safe and secure election cycle. I have been asking Mr. O'Sullivan, and he sends me these bogus email responses on October eighteenth, saying he has no records stating that Ms. Lycom, who makes two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars as Director of Administration, that evidently she doesn't serve any boards or commissions. And I think that's a bunch of BS, and I think Ms. Lycom, who where the buck stops with her, should chime up and state some information. And also, the consultant fee and contract to Bob Shinar, who's also receiving a full county logger's pension. I want to know exactly how much you're paying, Mr. Shinar, because you won't promote Tracy-
Thank you, sir.
-as a full-time county director of finance.
Thank you, sir. Are there anyone?
Final speaker.
Final speaker. All right. Next...
I don't make anything close to twenty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Nineteen thousand.
No. Look at the budget. Look at our budget.
That's, that's...
Look at our budget.
Thank you, sir. All right. Is there an oral report from the county executive?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I have one item.
Okay.
I'd like to remove the parks equipment that they're purchasing.
Okay.
The equestrian debris vacuum.
Trailer.
Second.
Okay. All right.
That's a lot of money for shovels, isn't it?
Okay. So, we have, you know, one item that to be removed, and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, that has been removed.
Motion to approve is amended.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The consent agenda has passed with the exception of the Parks and Recreation equine debris vacuum trailer. Mr. Hammond?
Well, I, being a horseman, and I own two horses, so I know what it's like to shovel stalls, and I don't think this piece of equipment is worth the money that we're paying for. It takes three people to operate the thing, and from what I understand, they had a demonstration, but the only ones I've ever seen on, where I looked it up on the computer, they only used dry wood chips, not chips that had cow manure or horse manure and urine in them. But from what I understand, from people I've talked to that have used these things, is they don't work as well as when they're, when they have foreign debris in them, and I think, I'm talking to Ryan before the meeting, that they had a live demonstration where they actually had manure and urine in the stalls, and he thought it cleaned it up. But I think the most important thing that we could do out there at this point is, rather than buy this vacuum machine, is put rubber mats in the stalls, which is around two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a stall, from what I understand, and I think that would make the cleaning a lot more efficient than trying to shovel dirt along with, the floors are currently made out of, except for thirty, I think they have thirty stalls that have mats in them. I think there's three-hundred-and-fifty-eight stalls total, but if...
I'll let you respond.
Yeah, just to give you a background on why we're proposing this. So, talking with our staff, one of the biggest labor-intensive items at the NEC is obviously shuffling out the stalls after a major show. Sometimes, we are doing this overnight to get ready for the next show. With over nearly seven hundred stalls out at the NEC, it is a huge labor-intensive effort. So, we are looking for any and all solutions to help reduce that labor. So, right now, talking with our park supervisor, Josh Reynolds, we're averaging about ten minutes per stall in terms of cleaning it out with pitchforks and buckets, essentially. We did test this out after a show, a pony show out there, and we tested it out right after the show ended. We used it on, obviously, dry wood, but also material that had been soaked by the horses, and with a quick kick, they were able to suck up everything pretty effectively, according to Josh, and got the average stall time cleaned down to three minutes a stall. So, we're looking at a huge savings in cost of manpower and time out there. We estimate anywhere from around three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in labor cost being saved through this. Obviously, I'm not going to stay up here and say that this is the end-all, be-all, and it's going to solve all our problems, because with seven hundred stalls, we still have a lot of work to do. But what I will tell you is this will help drastically reduce that, and we are continuing to look for ways to reduce that even further, including some structural upgrades, removable stalls that will help us use some machinery to help clean out stalls, and rubber mats and concreting the floors and those sorts of things. But all those things are months, if not years, out in terms of engineering and construction. This is something that we can get pretty quickly and significantly reduce the labor on my staff right now. So, that's why we're proposing it.
I heard you mention concrete. You can't use concrete because the horses with metal shoes will slip and fall, so the rubber mats are the only way.
Yeah, rubber mats.
Are the only thing that really works well with horses, and I saw some demonstrations and some complaints about the thing, and the thing I saw was, once they got the hopper full and they went to go empty it, they ended up having to shovel it out because it was so caked in there. It took a lot of time just shoveling out the hopper. I don't know if you're aware of that.
I don't know what video, I mean, our staff, when I asked them about it, they, the maintenance staff that I talked to didn't have any issues with emptying it or using it. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm just going off of what my staff told me at the time, and they were all pretty excited about the opportunity to use this piece of equipment potentially.
Well, I'd be willing to come out and watch a demonstration after the next show, and even in the evening, I'll come out there and see how well this machine does, but at this point, I would make a motion to table this item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Mr.?
Chairman, the choir.
Ryan?
Yeah, Ryan, one more thing.
Ryan, labor costs aside.
Yes, sir.
Are there people standing in line waiting for a shoveling job?
No. No. I'm potentially losing people before I'm hiring people, unfortunately, right now.
And the other thing, if we can get the stalls cleaned out a day earlier, we can then rent them a day earlier.
Correct. Yeah, we can bring shows in early.
So, not only, not only do we not have people that want to do the job and a lot of cost when they do it, if they get it done quicker, we can actually make more money.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, if you want to get it done quicker, you need to probably offer those guys a dollar or two a stall to clean them, and I bet you they get done a lot faster instead of standing around talking. I've walked back there, and they were supposed to be cleaning the stalls, and they're all standing around talking. So, I think you needed some incentive to get these people, and you'd probably get more people that would come out and work for you shoveling out the stalls if we paid them a dollar or two extra for each stall they cleaned. I bet you they'd get done a lot faster than ten minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to table this particular request, and it has been second. Okay. So, all those in favor of tabling it say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Nay. N-E-I-G-H, or N-A-Y.
Oh, that really hooks in with the horse thing, yes. Okay. So, we have enough votes to table this until the next meeting, and we'll look into it.
Yeah. See, I don't have a park in my district, so I've kind of adopted the equestrian center as my park, even though it's not my district, it's close, so.
Can I? Can I ask a question about that? Ryan, I think one of the things that the councilman was talking about before, when we were discussing this before, that they found that if it was on a rubber mat, that the cleanup went better, because if it's on the dirt floors, and I think dirt is the main consideration that you had there, is it's getting a lot of the dirt with it that's being picked up, so if it was on the mats, it'd tend to work better. So, I don't know if there's a way that you guys may be able to discuss it. I'm not asking to go back and forth now, but if there's a way that you all could discuss it before the next meeting, and maybe we have some sort of consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next up is bills for final passage, beginning with Bill number fifty-three forty-three.
Bill number five-three-four-three, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program, or Urban County CDBG program, namely, a 2024 sub-recipient agreement between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-four-three, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to St. Charles County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant Program, or Urban County CDBG program, namely, a 2024 sub-recipient agreement between St. Charles County and the city of St. Peters to operate and run the city's CDBG programs and services. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Okay. Bill number fifty-three forty-three passes. Next up is Bill fifty-three forty-four.
Bill number five-three-four-four, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to data sharing between the St. Charles County Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-four-four, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to data sharing between the St. Charles County Police Department and the Drug Enforcement Administration. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Okay. Bill number fifty-three forty-four passes, and final bill for final passage is fifty-three forty-five.
Bill number five-three-four-five, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget adopted as ordinance twenty-three dash one oh four, as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the general fund budgets of the Collector of Revenue, the Police Department, the Fire and EMS Division, and the Department of Emergency Communications, appropriating additional inter-fund transfers between the Family Arena Fund and the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant Fund, and additional capital expenditures in the Family Arena Fund.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three-four-five, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget adopted as ordinance twenty-three dash one zero four, as amended by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items in the general fund budgets of the Collector of Revenue, the Police Department, the Fire and EMS Division, in the Department of Emergency Communications, appropriating additional inter-fund transfers between the Family Arena Fund and the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant Fund as additional capital expenditures in the Family Arena Fund. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Swanson?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes. Okay. Bill number fifty-three forty-five passes. We have only one bill for introduction, Bill fifty-three forty-six.
Bill number five-three-four-six, requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a Tenth Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for collection of special business district assessment fees.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, that concludes our bills for introduction. Announcements and miscellaneous, and let me start here. Next month, we will begin work on our budget, and we will have a budget work session at the next two November meetings, beginning, I believe, at five forty-five. Does that sound, is that when we usually schedule those far? Yeah, I think that'll work. Five forty-five, we can always adjust the next one depending on how long we need. So, anyone that has, you know, budget concerns, budget issues, I believe we'll be getting the budget in...
We'll have it by the fifth of November.
Fifth of November. Okay. So, that'll work out well. Give us a chance. Okay.
I believe our next meeting is on a Tuesday, isn't it?
It is. It is.
Because Columbus Day is on Monday?
Well, it would be Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, sorry. We just had Columbus Day, sorry, or whatever they're calling it these days.
Okay. Any other announcements, Miss Lee? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your attention.